We're gonna, we're gonna talk about the minutes from March twenty first, twenty twenty-three. So.
There were a couple errors that I found that I corrected.
Okay.
One, I had forgotten to put motion carried on something and so that, that is corrected in this copy here.
Okay.
Very good. I'll make motion approve.
Second.
All right, motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen.
And Mark, I'm okay to sign via remote for student direct.
You are for me, yes.
Okay, that's why we've done the pass, so.
Okay. All right, Tony?
Okay, we, uh, last week you all had approved a monthly claim for Elaine Shafley. And we contacted her. It's a lot easier if we do it quarterly. So we are going to go ahead and seek approval to pay her all the way up through June. So we don't have to worry about it again until July. And the amount on that is fifty-eight, thirty-three, thirty-four. It's just a lot easier for everybody if we do that quarterly.
Okay, how's that sound to you guys?
Okay.
Good, good for me. I'll make motion approve.
All right. Motion carries, thank you. Okay.
Allied, weekly health insurance claims for Allied are in the amount of forty-nine thousand, two hundred fifty dollars, nineteen cents. And uh, medical is eighty-nine, fifty-six, thirty-six. Pharmacy, forty thousand, two ninety-three, eighty-three. There's no voids or stop loss. So the total is forty-nine, two fifty, nineteen, and I do need your signature on that.
Yeah. Steve, since you can't see it in person, do you have any questions on that?
He's muted.
You're muted. Somebody's muted.
Unmute yourself, Steve.
Sorry, my kids walked through. I thought, you don't think I still wanna hear that? Um, yeah, I, I, I have no questions, guys.
All right. Is that a motion?
It is.
All right.
Second.
Okay. And next I have accounts payable claims, which you all should have received via email. And the accounts payable claims are in the amount of three hundred eighty-five thousand, two hundred eighteen dollars, forty-two cents. Three eighty-five, two eighteen, forty-two.
I didn't see anything that had any questions on, guys. I'll make a motion approve.
All right.
Second.
Okay.
All right, motion carries to approve the claims paid as of three, as of today.
If you remember, I think it was last week, you approved, uh, USI Insurance. Uh, you signed a form to allow them to do the actuarial work or to pay for the actuarial work. And today you are paying that claim. And these health insurance claims are not in the regular claims because it's health insurance. It's different. You guys vote on that here. And the, so now you're actually approving the seven thousand dollar claim for that actuarial work.
Okay.
Motion approved.
Second.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you.
And we have payroll claims. And the payroll claims are in the amount of three hundred sixty-one thousand, four hundred eighty-one dollars and six cents. Three sixty-one, four eighty-one, oh six.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion carries to approve claim, payroll claims.
Okay. Last week, you approved an amount for a right-of-way on seven hundred south to Tim and Michelle LaFever. Uh, those numbers were incorrect. It was approved last week at fifty-four, thirty, but the amount should have been fifty-nine, fifty. So the way we need to do that, I'm going to seek approval of five hundred and twenty dollar claim so that we can then issue the correct check amount uh, for Mark to have when the LaFever's come do all that stuff. So you're actually approving five hundred twenty dollars to make up the difference for the numbers, uh, that were incorrect.
That's the easiest way to do that.
Yeah.
Well, with SBOA, that's probably what you have to do.
Yeah, that's fine. It was revised because there was, there was a change in land values from the time the original appraisal until the time we have it added action.
All right, any questions on that?
No.
So moved.
Second.
All right.
You guys didn't see that or? I already saw it last week.
Yeah. Good.
Okay, and Mark, you're gonna handle that and all that, right? Okay. Um, I think that is all that I have with the exception of just letting you know, we received notification uh, via email today that we are going to be audited soon. It'll be a two-year audit and a federal audit. Uh, so commissioners and Rick, we've gotta have a place to book. So last time they emailed us, they were here a week later. I don't know exactly when they're coming or how many.
Last time we put them down in one twenty-five.
We had them in one twenty-five last time. Uh, and I don't know where that's all at or anything like that, but, uh, that would be a perfect place for them again. Uh, but just letting you guys know and, and Rick know that we have to provide them a place to perform the audit.
Rick, what's your suggestion? Have you thought about that at all?
I don't really think, if it isn't in one twenty-five, there's not a lot of activity going on in that break room. I don't know if that's a good place. It's right up there in the second floor.
I don't know if it matters if, if people go in there and actually take their breaks in there, which some do. I don't know.
But you don't wanna make the two come.
I don't.
Bought out hallway. Give them everything they need.
Do we have a closet somewhere?
Well, we got the old coroner's office.
I don't know what shape the old coroner's office is. If there's a bunch of stuff stored in there, if we could empty, I mean, all, all, we just need a place. You'll have to let us know where we're gonna, where we're gonna tell them to go.
So are you okay with that, Rick, finding a place for them?
Yeah.
Okay.
We'll find a place.
Okay.
Outside.
Ed?
I have a conference table that's pretty much unused now in our office, plenty of space for them, but I don't know if they would wanna be in there because with tax time coming, it'll get quite busy.
Yeah, I, I don't know how much privacy they, I don't know. I, I have no idea about that, but.
Just as a, as an option.
Well, I appreciate that consideration because I know that'd intrude on your space too. So, but yeah, maybe, maybe have that conversation with Rick and see.
If SBOA is okay with that, that, that would probably be a good location because they're gonna be needing stuff from you and stuff from me and they'd be right there at that point, so we'll see.
And you know, even if we had to put temporary partition up or something there. Cause I don't know if we have any part movable partition walls. I know we did it one time.
So. Some of us.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you.
Thanks, Rick. I just wanted to give you, we just got that email a little bit ago, so I wanted to let you get on that pretty quick, so.
All right, very good. Anything else?
Uh, that's all from me.
Thank you. All right, Brad? Paul, Dan, anybody that wants?
I bet you got some right-of-way permits.
A couple.
She sent them to me the other times. I already have it in there. That's good.
All right, so start out, I sent out an email about the pickup truck. So we all know where we're at on that. I guess basically we're starting over now, starting to look again. Um, Paul's been in contact.
All right, the GM has opened where we can spec a truck and order through them. Dodge has not opened, uh, twenty-four orders yet. Don't know when they will do, when they will do that. Last year, when they opened the orders up, uh, for municipal bids, they sold out for the year in two days. Wow. So I don't know, um, guess I'm kinda looking for a little bit of guidance from you guys on do we spec a truck and try to see what we can get as far as ordering a new twenty-four? We continue our pursuit as trying to find something on the lot?
Well, if we spec a truck and find one in the meantime, then we can always pull back on that truck that you've ordered, correct?
No, we haven't ordered.
Yeah.
No, but I mean, if you do.
If we would, we would.
If you would, yeah.
Yeah.
So maybe that'd be, but, but man, I, I can't believe they didn't, they wouldn't hold those trucks for you that you had spoken for.
Yep, they sold it. Yep, so.
I mean, I, I, there's no way we can pre-approve claims like that.
Well, and like a new, a new twenty-four, I have, they don't even know what the prices are gonna be on them yet.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I don't know.
But I mean, like, say if we pre, e- even for one sitting on a lot.
Right.
I mean, if we had money pre-approved to where you could put money down on it to hold it. I, I mean, uh, Tony or Bree, there's no, there's no way to do that, is there?
You had approved at one of the meetings. You had pre-approved up to fifty thousand dollars for the purchase of that truck.
Right. Yeah, like I think we did for the bucket, bucket truck. Um, so I think.
They did too for this last pickup.
Yeah. I don't know.
Oh, I see what you're saying, Mark. I got you. Yeah.
I don't know how that would work. I mean, you, you, like Stan said, you can't do an actual claim. You don't know exactly what the amount's going to be.
No, but I think you can pre-approve the purchase up to a stated amount, and then as soon as you've got a signed purchase order.
Then bring it in.
Bring it in and.
And see where we're at on the cycle.
And then run a special claim.
Correct, Rick. That work?
Yep.
Then, so that brings up kind of another question too. Um, maybe this is more for Mark. Like, right now, there's only one brand that is open for orders. So if we, if we wanted to order one now, we would send out a quest for quote from three, and if two of them would turn it back in and say, we're not even quoting them now, we would go back to like we've done before.
Yeah, but at least you've complied by, by the statute.
So the other question now goes back to like Paul was saying, we don't know what these new trucks are cost. And I'm guessing they're not gonna be under fifty thousand. So do we just need to get again, ask them for their approval?
Well, what were you seeing, what were you, what were you seeing in the used market?
Right around fifty.
You might be looking at what, up to seventy-five?
Were, were those used or were they just sitting on the lot?
No, those were new.
New sitting on the lot.
New setting on the lot.
Right.
So I guess my request now is if we could, if you guys would be all right with it to ask for sixty thousand, not knowing what the new pickups are gonna cost.
Yeah, if that'd cover it, I don't know.
And what they've been telling you is what they are still gonna offer the government discount.
If you order a new twenty twenty-four, then the municipal government discounts come back in on a new pickup like that. The ones that were sitting on the lots, they've done away with them just because supply and demand, they're like, we're not gonna, we're not gonna give you discount because someone else will pay the price for it.
Right.
So the, if we would bid a new twenty twenty-four out and order one, then our discount would come back onto that. So that might help with the overall cost, obviously, but I don't know where that's gonna fall by any means. Which, I mean, we can go about the bidding process just like we would normally. See, send out for three different bids, see what comes back and then maybe move forward off of that.
I was sure things sixty covered, I don't know.
Yeah.
I mean, that's kind of a shot in the dark, but it'll give us some.
Yeah.
Good and aggravating.
Well, what do you guys think? You wanna up, up, up the approval to sixty thousand and, and go ahead and put in a, have them go ahead and put in a bid on a, uh, order for twenty-four?
Is there a reason we can't just wait till the bids come in, even if there's only one?
Oh, you mean to okay it? Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, we can do that.
Okay.
Then we'd at least know where we're at.
Right.
Okay.
You talking on ordering?
Yes.
Okay, but you're still gonna pre-approve up to sixty to buy a brand-new off the lot, or no?
Well, I don't know if, if, uh, lot prices have changed that much since we came back with the fifty thousand number.
Yeah, they're, basically, they're just not there. Or the ones that are there are spoken for, so I think, personally, I think the best bet is to go with, back to the bidding process and see where that, where we end up landing with that. Just bid it out and see, see what kind of response we get back and then hopefully that'll help us make an educated decision.
Well, yeah, we could do that as far as the, the bid process goes, and then if something does come open on a lot, if one of these dealers calls you back.
They happen to find one for us?
If they'd happen to find one for you, then we can go from there.
Okay.
All right.
Cause I know between Tony and Bree, I mean, they're as expedient as anything as far as getting claims processed, so.
Yep.
And you're still pre-approving for up to fifty?
Hey, Brad, is it, is, the ones on the lot, is it a problem not having any way to make a down payment on them to hold that truck, or what's the, what's the issue there?
Well, um, it was interesting, cause, uh, the day basically after, was after the commissioner meeting.
Yep.
Um, Paul had sent them an official letter, you know, with their invoice price they'd had on it. Paul signed it and said, hey, basically, we agreed to take this. Was it the next day it was sent back?
No, it was the week after we sent that.
Was it the week after?
It was the following week they sent back, or the salesman called me and said, hey, they sold that truck.
And we'd agreed to it. They got paperwork.
Yeah.
So no, uh, putting anything down, I don't have a clue.
I, I was just wondering if you had a credit card or something. You could put a thousand dollars down on it on a credit card and then get the, the claim approved to pay the credit card and pay the balance of the truck, if that would have helped you or not.
I think the dealership just screwed up. I think.
Yeah. I think you're right, Mark.
Probably got more money out of her.
Well, you know, it's, it's a scarce resource, you know, and, and those dealers or those, those salesmen are just trying to get their deal done.
Right.
Yep. And one sold it out from under the other one, so.
Yep.
Damn. Okay. All right, next, um, when we hire companies to do work for us, like this was from when we did the sheet filing job on County Road twelve hundred south. They have to go to, with an insurance company, and they gotta get bonded for the amount of the job. I received a letter from the insurance company for that job. Basically, all it says, hey, is the job done? You know, what was the final cost? And then they needed one of the commissioners just to sign off for the insurance company that the bond is, it's done. So that's what I brought. We just need to have this signed, so I can return this paperwork to them. It's all done. Everything's done. There's nothing there. The insurance company just needs to know, hey, it's done.
Okay. I mean, that sounds pretty appropriate. Does that need an approval and everything, or can you just sign it?
It's got the commissioner's signature on it.
It's, uh.
It was the bond for.
The insurance company.
To terminate the bond agreement.
Yeah, I'd approve that and sign it.
So moved.
You want a motion there, Stan?
Yeah. Uh, Steve already motioned. If you wanna second it.
Yep.
All right, are you ready for this? Um, I and M, again, doing a lot of forework. These are all for I and M. Got multiples. So I'd like to present them all at the same time and then advocate and sign. So the first one we have is on County Route five hundred east, between two and three hundred south, replacing a pole. The next one is they're replacing twenty-eight poles and six thousand feet of wire on Winchester Road from the Geneva city limits up to not quite County Road eight fifty south. On County Road one fifty west, between seven hundred south and eight hundred south, they are replacing two poles. On County Road four hundred east, north, north four hundred east, north of Pickle Road, it's a dead-end road, they're replacing a pole. On County Road five hundred north, between four fifty and five hundred west, replacing a pole. And on County Road three hundred north, between five and six hundred west, they are replacing a pole. And we've been out and looked at all of them. We physically drive out there, look at them. I went out yesterday and looked at all the twenty-eight poles they're doing. And I mean, they're in the back the right of way now. Like I've said before, they put them back in that same line or spot almost if they can. So they're at the back the right of way now. I measured some of them off and they're fine, so.
Yeah, that's a pretty big project.
That's a big project, yes.
Okay, I'll take a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
So I, uh, while you guys are signing them, um, just a couple updates for you. The fuel tanks that you guys gave permission to purchase last year, they are hoping to start the project later in April. And they'll come in and prepare the pad and pour the concrete and get that ready. So that was some good news. They're getting ready to start on that.
You're signing for him or not?
Yeah, just get it back to me and I'll take care of that later.
And then just as an update also, um, County Road seven hundred south that we're planning on improving from US twenty-seven to County Road one fifty west. The, it is now, I'm having it engineered. We've got all the right-of-way secured, so now I'm having it engineered. And I'd met with them last Friday to get started and so we can get this moving forward on the engineering side of it.
Will that road be closed during the construction?
It shouldn't be for the whole thing, but for some of it it will, and I, we're going to coordinate with the school so it can be done when school's out of session. That actually has to be closed. And there again, I'm not, I make no promises on when these jobs are gonna go, but hopefully in the next couple years here. A long process. And other than that, just kinda uh, business of you. Oh, Mark, did you happen to get a chance to look at that? I will take agreement.
I've got it here in my stack, so I'll take a look at it here.
Okay. Another than that, I don't think we have anything. Hoping for warm weather and dry weather.
All our road signs intact?
All the road signs are intact. Hopefully by the end of the day-to-day, we still have two roads closed for high water. But I think by the end of the day-to-day, we should be able to open them back up, so.
Good. Yeah, cause it looked like the river was going back down event.
Yeah.
Yep.
Good.
And that's all we have.
All right, very good. Appreciate your work. Like I told you before, you guys got a lot going.
There, there's quite a bit going on, but that's all right. We appreciate your guys' help with that too, so.
Yeah, so. All right, Rick?
If she was doing that, it'd be great. Yeah, I'll take it back. I wanna do it now and take it with me.
Hey, Steve, can you hear the people at the table okay?
Uh, I, I don't know that I'm hearing, yeah, I, I was able to, yeah, I was able to hear, um, um, Brad, uh, real well.
Okay, all right.
I, I, the audio, the audio is great, guys. I'm, the, the folks, uh, wha- whatever they did, uh, it seems to really have it dialed in now.
Well, let us know. Rick's at the table now too, so let us know if you can hear him okay too, so.
Ri- Rick's pretty soft-spoken. This might be a good test for him.
We'll just have to get him riled up.
Alls I have is some updates. The construction, the hole is cut into Ethan's room in one twenty-five. So then we get it framed in, we get the door it can be put in. Um, it's also, uh, the room, the power room, we're in there framing up them walls and.
Good.
So that's happening. The tables came late yesterday afternoon that you approved for one twenty-five.
Okay.
They're not assembled yet, but they are here. The boiler room upgrade, that's happening as we speak. Um, they pretty much, as far as I know, they got everything to do it. So we're pretty fortunate there unless they find something else.
Did they, when they do that, do they give us a timeframe for compliance? I mean, it wasn't like they said, you got thirty days or whatever.
I'm kinda playing phone tag with the guy down in the state. So as soon as I got something from that insurance guy, I called down there and left a message. He may have tried to call me back. I tried again, writing post-mail again. Because I wanted to get ahold of him and had it all off the past and say, what's our grace period? What are we gonna do here? So that conversation hasn't taken place, but I'm hoping by the end of the week it's fixed.
Yeah, well, that's pretty good that they got on it that quick.
Yeah, that was BTS is doing that.
Yeah. At least it wasn't like, oh, it's gonna be ten months till we get the parts and.
Just by luck, he was here when he was down there and heated when that guy was here.
Yeah.
Um, kinda ironic, uh, must've happened over the weekend. Hot water heater in the complex went out and one in on probation.
Lucky us.
So hopefully it's, uh, we're fixed.
So did they, when you say they went out, did they leak?
The one here down in the basement did.
Okay.
Um, the one at the, uh, Superior Court, I think it was just a heating element that went out. So I don't know if it was a power surge or power out over the weekend or what may have happened. It, it was older, it was older. The one we have here was still under warranty, so.
Good.
Just kind of coincidence it was two of them. Um, last week and the afterday, we had three contractors in. Possibly we're gonna get another one for the generator project of getting that wired and set. So hopefully before too long, they'll bring in some quotes for that.
So the contractors would be like for the pad?
Everything.
The pad, the conduit, the?
Setting it in, yeah, running the conduit to the supply we have now, setting the transfer, yep. All except, like I've stated before, running it from that box on the other side of the chiller's up to that.
Right, okay.
But yeah, that's how we, I should have brought the scope of work that we made up. Gene was very instrumental in this. He's been a great help on that project.
So while we do that, uh, and I assume that since we're having to wait on the generator, I don't know what the timeframe is there. But I mean, we can, we can get ahead of all that as far as running all our cabling and wiring and conduit and.
That's the plan.
To where when the generator sets, it's just like plug it in and go.
Set it and get it wired up and go.
Yeah.
Exactly.
So all, all that ahead of it will already be in place.
Will be in place.
Good.
Just, I get them quotes and get approval, and we'll get it on the books and get it started. When that happens, I'm gonna try to pick a holiday that because the power will be off when I gotta hook that in the main box down. And that's gonna, I'll get more details on that. This building won't have power for some time, in the course of days. See where we can fit it in and see if it works that way.
Yeah.
Now, the other generator will still work, but it won't run everything to conduct business.
Yeah, we're definitely gonna have to see how that works with the server room and everything.
That, that should be fine. That isn't gonna get disconnected until that other one's up and it functions.
Okay.
But we won't be able to offices aren't gonna have power in there as far as their computer and stuff like that.
Yeah. But I mean, when we move it over, like there's two, two pan. But I mean, when we move it over, like there's two, two panels down there now, I don't know if we'll still have two panels or if they'll add any more panels.
It'll be the same except for that transfer switch, it'll be the same thing as what we have now. But, but the old generator will still be functioning during the course of this getting hooked up.
I see, okay. Good.
Lots going on, but that's all.
Good. So really, as far as that one twenty-five, we should be able to, uh, be use that, actually use that for training.
Should.
Pretty darn quick.
They get that fire door in here and that's, 'cause they're, they're framing it in now, hopefully when we get it, just to be able to set it in and go.
Didn't want that door supposed to be here.
No, they didn't give, they didn't give no timeframe, I just ordered it last week, 'cause that's when I got approval for it, so.
Yeah.
We'll see how long it's a fire doors.
Yeah.
I guess maybe I can try to get a day from them and because S C Construction would probably be done with that room. Maybe we can still use that room, we don't lose the offer from Ed.
Yeah. Okay. Sounds good. All right, thank you, Rick. Ed, did you have anything?
Yeah, mine is real quick, I, uh, wanted to let you know that all of our property tax information has been through all three of the offices, the assessor, the auditor, and my treasurer's office. Everything has been cleared through EXOFT, DLGF, and the State Board of Accounts, and it's now with our L and D mailmaster vendors. Tax bills will be mailed out Friday, April the seventh, and taxpayers will receive them probably Monday the tenth, and that's a full month before they're due on Wednesday, May the tenth. So everything's in really good shape, uh, we're actually a couple of days ahead of the game, so I, I feel good about that. Question I have, last year we've reserved a few extra spots out here for taxpayers. Don't know if you wanna do that again, I don't know if we can spare the extra spots with all the, uh, construction going on and such, that I wanted to just ask your opinion on.
I, I don't know, I guess I didn't remember reserved spots for taxpayers, I know we did for COVID shots.
We did for COVID and then we did it the following year, just because of all the oldies.
Gotcha.
But, uh, don't have to.
'Cause we got the handicap spots closest for them to the elevator.
We do have two of those, there's one employee that takes one pretty much every day. Which they're titled to, it'll be long, but, but, uh,
Yeah.
That leaves one, we do have spots out along the street, but Tuesdays, those are usually always filled out. But, uh, it's fine if you don't, I just wanted to bring it to your attention and ask your opinion.
So we would reserve like, uh, for thirty-minute parking?
Yeah, at, at the very most, yeah.
So. Um, yeah.
We could try it for, we could see if we might not need it.
Yeah.
Do that on a day-by-day basis, see.
Yeah, try.
We're getting more and more people doing stuff online and by phone and, and, um, fewer people coming into the office, so.
Yeah. If, if, if we would try it for two weeks for your highest when you have the highest, uh, expected walk-ins.
The first week and the last week is generally of that month, is usually.
Of May?
Yeah.
So.
So like from, uh, April tenth to the seventeenth, whatever, and then that very last week of May.
Yeah, I don't know, what do you guys think?
I don't remember doing it last year, but I know we did it for, but I definitely remember we did it for times.
That's fine, if you don't wanna do it, we did it for a few days, but, um.
But you wouldn't wanna do ten days and then back to normal then ten days? If you do it, you'd wanna do it for the whole thirty, wouldn't you?
What, what would happen if we would do this, you know? Ask employees for the month of May, you know, if, if they are able to leave spots open, 'cause I know we got a lot of employees park out here. You know, 'cause we've got a parking lot across the street, we've got a parking lot across the courthouse, we've got some street parking. You know, if we could ask employees to try and leave some spots open here, 'cause it's a busy time for, you know, it. Shannon, is that something we could put out in, uh, um, request for employees? You know, 'cause during, during the month of May, if, if possible, to, to maybe leave some spots open? So.
I was thinking the same thing, Stan, I think that sounds like a good idea.
Yeah.
Well, me, I always, I'll re-park her.
There's only about four of us that park over in, uh, on the street parking lot.
'Cause you, like I say, we've got several options for employees who are gonna be here all day.
Sometimes those, those spots are taken up when the fitness center's busy, a lot of people will park there, but not all the time.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
Maybe the church parking lot over here, uh, few employees park there.
But just leave it alone and see if, if some employees would move over, that would be nice, and then let's not reserve any, just see what happens.
Yeah, if we could put out a notice that was not too threatening, you know.
But everything's in good shape at the office.
All right.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Michelle? All right, thanks for coming in.
Spring break.
All right.
We don't go anywhere, so.
And you're not where Steve's at?
I know, where is he at?
Uh, I, you know, I hate to even ask.
Looks wonderful.
It's a secret.
I thought I saw a sign that said Club Met, but I don't.
I'm, I, I'm down here with half, half of Madison County, I think.
Are you a keywets? Or that's?
No, we're, we're, we're at S E S to keep.
That's the pass-through agreement for the grant.
All right, well, very good, so.
Okay, so just a little bit of an update before we get through the agreements. Just a little bit of a breakdown of what I've been doing since I saw you guys last on February fourteenth. I've been working on the NDOT grant daily. I've had a lot of Zoom meetings, uh, emails back and forth, phone calls between Todd Jennings, who's head of the fifty-three eleven program. And one of the things that came out of our February is that, um, I will need to attend training to be a drug and alcohol program manager. That way if, when our employees get randomly pulled or a drug screen, I'll have to be trained to be able to get them where they need to go in a certain amount of time.
Now, who would've thought that would enter into it?
I would not have.
Yeah.
Um, and then, uh, I, he gave me the information I needed for a draft program budget, uh, which I know Tony had asked about before. There's also, um, more drug and alcohol and medical qualifications training, and I need to update our program manual. I have attached, so March sixth, I turned in our proposed budget, um, so it's on the second page that you guys have. And what it does is it breaks down direct costs, that would be directly to the transportation, there's agency costs, and then there's indirect costs that they call shared. So, for instance, if you look at the second line item, the five oh one oh two, notice that that amount is in the indirect because that would be my salary that's shared amongst the agency and the transportation program. So anything in the pink column, orange column, is a shared between the two. So I had to allocate what percentage of my workplace comp would be a shared cost, what percentage of vacation sick time, all of that. And then what, what it does then is it allows us to have a percentage, and our percentage for our indirect rate is like twenty-eight point seven six. And then that goes into the NDOT calculator, I don't know, it's a whole big thing, but Todd and I worked together a couple of weeks on this to figure out which costs could be shared, which costs are solely for transportation, that sort of thing, so it's definitely not in stone, it's just a preliminary budget, um, that he thought would be good for us. Let's see.
That is interesting, so there's only certain costs that are even eligible to be shared?
Yes.
And then among the costs that are shared, they're shared on a fifty-fifty basis?
Around there, yeah.
So the direct costs are just strictly out of your budget?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep. And then Todd put on in dot site, uh, thirty videos that walk you through the program application. So I went through all thirty videos. With that.
I bet that was exciting.
It was, that took me two weeks. But it is, so like I watch a video and then I do what he says, and then I watch a video and then I go back, so I would say I only probably have another two weeks left of the application itself and then it's done, so that's.
I thought you were gonna say another two weeks of videos left.
I don't think I could last another three weeks, that's why I needed a big off today. So that's just something to look at, um, I've been working with him, and then I also uh, sent a pass-through agreement.
Yeah, Mark, Mark has the pass-through agreement and the resolution as well. Uh, and I've given him the numbers that were at. Uh, he's reading through the pass-through agreement now.
Both of those are state things, down to the periods of.
I think I, I docu-sign that already, but Mark's gonna sign it here.
Yeah, they allow you, Tony, to be the designated dying of.
The dude?
Yeah.
The dude?
You're a dude to signs.
Signing dude?
You aren't the signing dude.
I want that on a nameplate on my desk, Bree, can you handle that?
I have the question.
The signing dude, I like it. Do they need to get this signed today and sent back?
Yeah, that's true.
What kind of time do we have to?
Whenever.
Whenever. This is one of those, take it or leave it, right?
No, not at all. And, and I mean, the sooner the better, it'd be great, but whenever, I'm off this week, so.
You should have inside review. Yeah, okay, sure, okay. Well, no, when I say take it or leave it, with the, with the federal, uh, government, it's sign our agreement or you don't get the money.
Uh huh.
That's the way they.
That's kind of how I understood it.
Yeah, yeah.
And I, um, got shot down a couple of times in my first drafts of putting our names in there, I didn't quite have them right, so.
Yep. What did you think, Clayton, I mean, you went through it?
Yeah, I mean, the, the smaller one, the authorizing resolution is simply authorizing that you go through the grant application, the pass-through agreement. Um, at the most basic sense is the county agreeing that the funds to the grant will be appropriately distributed down to the council on aging as the sub-recipient.
So the pass-through will be the county government passing through to council on aging, gotcha.
Did we do, and we probably did a while back, but, I mean, we'll, we'll check, but we probably already signed, um, a resolution or authorizing resolution designating Adams County Council on Aging as the sub-recipient?
We did something to that.
I think in December we did that, yeah.
I didn't know if they had an official number to it.
We'll, we'll check, uh, we'll wanna see if we can find and make sure we have all that in our folder, our legal folder, uh, Clayton, so they'll be, 'cause I know you know, they, here basically they're saying, you know, we have to certify that we're in compliance with all the federal rules and laws incorporated, the kitchen sink and everything else, so. Okay, as far as we know, but I mean, you're working with, uh, Todd, and so I would, I'm assuming that if he sees something that looks out of lines, that he would let us know what it is.
He calls me immediately, so.
Okay, good, good. So yeah, no, I, I mean, I don't have a problem just getting it, getting it done, so. I'll sign this, do they need this, they need me to docu-sign this, is that how they want it? I can just sign it? Then, if you wanna take this with you, if you wouldn't mind scanning and sending it back to me so I have a copy as well, that is completely signed.
Yep.
And then the authorizing resolution then, so we just need, the resolution would be resolution, this would be number eight, is that right, Tony?
Uh, where did I write down on there?
Eight resolution.
Yeah, resolution number eight.
Yep. Two thousand and twenty-three dash eight. Uh, so it's just resolution authorizing the filing of the calendar year twenty twenty-four application for the grant under the fifteen eleven fifty-three thirty-nine of the Federal Transit Act. Uh, Department of Transportation is authorized to make grants, uh, to states through the Federal Transit Authority, to support capital operating feasibility, uh, projects, uh, for non-urbanized public transportation systems. Contracted financial assistance will impose certain obligations upon applicant, including provisions by it of the local share of project cost, therefore be resolved by Adams County Board of Commissioners, uh, that the President Stan Stoppenhagen on behalf of Adams County Board of Commissioners authorized to make necessary certification insurances, uh, and be empowered to enter into this agreement with NDOT for the provision of rural public transportation services within Adams County. Adams County Council on Aging is authorized to execute and file the application on behalf of the Adams County Commissioners with NDOT to aid the financing of transit assistance projects pursuant to section fifty-three eleven of the Federal Transit Act as amended. Adams County Council on Aging is authorized to furnish such additional information as NDOT may require. Um, and Council on Aging is authorized to act, execute grant contract agreements on behalf Adams County Commissioners certified, uh, by Board of Commissioners. Need a motion to approve, uh, this authorizing resolution. So move.
Second.
All right, motion carries to approve the authorizing resolution.
Is there a spot for the date on that one too?
Mm-hmm. You just put that in. It looks like I need to sign the bottom. Do you want me to scan this instead of you, or do you wanna take this also, do you need this also and then you scan it back to me, or?
Cause I, I have a.
If I can get that in, the pass-through agreement, both, all signed, that'd be great. Cool.
Well, they don't even have a signature on here for the commissioner, I think.
No, it's just signature of the reporting officer, unless you wanna add a line for it.
Well, commissioners adopt resolutions. I think they, they don't realize.
That's why we waited to do it, because we needed to have the attorney go through it, make sure the resolution was proper, that's why Clayton, if I ever talk about it a week or two, I always wanted to like my office, I couldn't come and just say, yeah, I want this resolution.
Sure.
So. Although you guys weren't gonna get away with that, I can think up a couple of things.
No.
He is the dude, right?
All right, need a motion from the Commissioners to adopt resolution twenty twenty-three dash eight.
I think we did that.
Did you already do that? All right, I missed it. Need to sign it then.
Yep.
Mark had sent you and Tony something from FTA, it's like eighteen pages long.
Just to you. Okay.
If you would either sign or you sign that, then that'll come back to me, that would be.
I think I might've.
You already did.
Signed that, yes. Uh, was that on the twenty-fourth?
It has been.
Well, let me see if I can, yeah, there were a few things going back and forth, like. Yeah, if you want, yeah, if you just wanna scan it and get it back to me, that'd be great, and I think the pass-through agreement's right there.
Steve, I know you weren't, weren't partial to the presentation that she made. Uh, she did present a budget along with that, and I don't know if, if you had any questions or wanted us to go over that with you in any any more detail, but we can, is that something we can email to? What's that?
Mark, I think what you.
That would be great if she could send that to me, Stan, but no, I have no questions at this time.
Okay.
I think it's this one. This is what you need.
It's a FTA. Oh, yeah, that's all.
I just wanted to, you did like just now.
Oh, okay.
It's not the MOU, is it? No, no, no.
It says Adobe sign on behalf.
All right.
FTA.
I'll let you guys.
It says, I'm one that just popped up. I can sign it in print and give it to you right now.
Sure.
You guys wanna? I just got a thing back that said I signed it.
I know, I don't.
From them that says I signed it, so. All right. Yeah, any, any of the grant, and for any of that stuff, if you could make sure that Bree and I get all of that. We're getting a federal audit this year, so we need to.
Do you want that printed or emailed?
Uh, you can, if you scan it and, and send it, if you wanna copy me and, uh, Bree both on that, that'd be great, um.
Now, as far as the grant cycle, is Todd involved in the approval process himself or does that go before somebody else?
I think it's from him.
Okay. And so then from the timeframe, uh, we would hear back, uh, thumbs up, thumbs down in May?
Yeah.
Okay.
He's been approving stuff along the way, so I would know, like, he's already preliminarily approved the budget.
Gotcha.
And indirect, so.
Yeah.
Because it was not approved.
Does any of this also need approval from council? On this pass-through agreement or anything? Doesn't appear, but, you know. I need to see where it would have to, but. But we'll have to get the. But we'll have to get the, uh, local match funds.
But as, as I look at your budget, I mean, your anticipated revenues match your anticipated expenses, both direct and indirect.
Right.
And so, um, you know, it, it looks, looks very appropriate, I'm sure you and Todd, like you said, went, went through that whole thing, so.
Since this document has already been signed, hmm.
Well, because you forwarded your version of it.
I forwarded, I forwarded my version of it, you think you sent me the FTA?
I did, I can send it again.
Yeah, cause I'm not, well, let me look at here, this is director.
Yep, at Adams County Council.
So it's, yeah, right here, see, I've got the, it says pass through, that's not it.
Maybe it came from Adobe.
That's where mine came from, Adobe. Well, that's why I'm not seeing it. Adobe, Adobe sign on behalf of Michelle Linkridge. Brooke Hoffaker? What's the, uh, is that something there? Thursday, March twenty-third. Brooke Hoffaker? I wanna click on something, it's not right, Adobe's. Well, that's when I got it, it was March twenty-third. Well, it's not telling me here, so let's see, oh, okay. And just get hijacked.
I get that.
Okay, I'll just go through this, when I sign this, we'll get it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Right to me, alright.
Perfect.
Thanks.
All right, anything else we need from Michelle while she's here?
I just need her to.
I keep hearing good things about everything you're doing for Council on Aging in that building and that facility, and so, yeah.
We're having grief, we're starting a grief session in the beginning of April for our four weeks, so hopefully we can reach more seniors with that.
Very good, are you working with the local funeral homes on, on something like that too?
Actually, it's, that's a good idea, but just with, uh, ProMedica, Home Health and Hospice, they're gonna come in and.
Okay. Very good.
More opportunities.
Yeah. All right, thanks, Michelle. All right, um, Mark, do you wanna go over subdivisions? Yeah, one thing at a time.
Was it same?
Holding up to the camera so Steve can see and see as they key.
Uh, pretty straightforward subdivision, State Road two eighteen, four hundred west, west side of the road, um, this. She is. Right way, yeah, so this piece here was already taken out of it, which is this little guy, so this is not part of this. What was left is one piece, so it's now been made into a minor subdivision of three lots. Lot one has the home on it, five acres, two farm ground only, thirty-three acres, lot three farm ground, farm buildings. Access, get back to everything.
Good. We use it, so move.
Hey. I'll sign the units and Steve. Yeah, yeah. I told you, I'm sorry about that. It's, Tony, we can sign that? Yeah.
We got dogs now.
Uh, we, we are, I've gotta head go for a second. He's in charge. So yeah.
At the end of the meeting or right now?
Um. Why don't you ask, you'll have to see how he'd like to differ me and that to be your father-in-law.
Yeah, he's gonna be here so long.
Yeah, for longer than it is.
Yeah, I'd say he still have the good concession.
Yeah, I, I would say that, I think.
Good, you know, my intention. I think after that. You wanna dip me on, it's pouring, it's all your.
That's one, that's one. Let's get looked at, I guess. That, I thought that was good. For, uh, uh, well, no. We've got both. Steve?
Yes, that's.
That's. That's executive.
Mark said the dog kennel thing is executive.
Oh, yeah, Mark, he said that's an executive.
Yep.
He said wait till executives, uh, the kennels too.
Um, the rezone was on my thing, but that's for you more than me.
Yeah, um, on that rezone, I got some questions for you, so, um. On the legal description, so within our zoning, or in our rezoning ordinance, I mean, you send the due pass recommendation. And in that it says that the, you know, rezoning was approved, and you've got, uh, legal descriptions that are in the actual deeds, so the way I'm seeing this, it's, it looks like it's, um. Selking is, selking applied for the rezoning and the rezoning is approved for selking, uh, selking, but title is still in MJS. Title of the property, at least it hasn't transferred yet, MJS Holdings?
No, I sent the selking deeds.
That's too different, we did an.
MJS is across the road.
MJS was a different rezone.
Okay, so why, I don't know.
We've, we've rezoned that.
All right.
Yeah.
Yeah. MJS, okay.
Mark.
Well, I gotta look at.
I thought that the.
Yeah, it is, but it's also for this.
It'll be okay to discuss both, even if it just says.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Okay, we're good then. I just wanted to make sure as auditor, I can do.
Right.
Yep. Yeah. What's talked about is what is supposed to be talked about, I guess that's exactly.
Make sure we don't get too many, I don't wanna get in some trouble. Nah, I don't wanna get you guys in trouble, or do I?
Brother, you're not.
How about this, Stan?
I'm thinking MJS, how about Steve, look what he's at?
Yeah, I, I missed the first, I missed the first part of that conversation, but I thought too, we had approved that.
Yeah, that's, today's was just selking.
It was older looking.
What's that?
That's selking, it's the older ones.
Yeah, the, the deeds, but this is, this is what you, this is what we need, the zoning ordinance, all right, selking.
Yeah.
All right.
MJS was February eighth, yeah.
And while he was that up, the, the, uh, selking, which they are going to, uh, wanna add a building and do some more construction out there, that's what. And we were in plan commission a few months back, looked at MJS, that's when actually it was realized that that wasn't even a, still an ag property or selking.
Oh, that's right.
So I actually, and then, and then ironically, at the same time, they wanna add a building, and I'm like, well, now's the time, we need to get this thing rezoned, do properly fit the trucking cells that they do. That's the reason we did it, I asked them to, they, they did no problem, you know, came in and filled out paperwork and paid for the hearing and, um, the commission said they recommend that, rezoned.
Rezoned.
Out here.
Barely this, that work. So where's, it's at two twenty-four, where's that at?
Yep, that's selking, right beside two hundred north, so MJS is right around here in the blue.
Gotcha, all right.
The old carter lumber. You just got two different things, that's all.
That's screwed up, I'm looking at the wrong direction, all right.
They're neighbors though.
Yeah, he's of, uh.
Yeah, right over here. Yeah, see, I got this flipped, I thought I was looking over here.
Yep, see that, the fact that that's blue, that's what they just became, which is an industrial zone, that matched.
So it's just, this is, the only thing being rezoned is this piece and then the portion of the railroad?
Yes, cause they own that.
Okay, and is this already zoned that way or no?
It is not, that's not theirs.
Oh, that's not.
That's a different company.
Gotcha, all right, I was just, I was trying to match up the parcel numbers, cause I didn't have parcel numbers on the actual recommendation. And, cause the deeds are old, so, and so our legal description says be part of parcel number this, the parcel number that, and so I'm looking at the wrong one, I'm going, these are the wrong parcel numbers, so, okay.
That's, that's the two pieces.
All right, I think we're fine.
Okay.
All right, so let me, uh.
They're working on, uh, some state design release for the building they wanna build and they've developed.
How did we work that out with that tile, wasn't the tile going right where they wanted to build the building? Or am I?
Selking?
Correct.
You say that's gonna be an ordinance.
Uh huh. I haven't given them any kind of permit yet, so I don't even know where.
Cause there's a tile going through, right through that property, the Hughes tile.
The drainage board give a variance for the solar grounds and the building.
That's right, cause they weren't going over top of it, they were just going close, that's right, yeah.
A variance for the setback from the tile.
Gotcha.
One side. They don't have a permit yet for the building, because they need to get rezoned and that need to go through the state, so.
And the drainage board, which we did.
We did that. Yeah, the total of it is, it's seven point one four acres, so it's six acre parcel, then the railroad portion is the one point four one, so. It looks like.
Boy, that's a lot of rigmarole to put a building up, isn't it? I bet they didn't figure it'd be that much.
Well, I didn't, cause actually if you go look, you'll see that there's all kinds of material, everything, and they were down drills, post holes, and built pullouts.
And start building, yeah.
The post hole's a bit out there since, I mean, January.
Yeah. Okay, I got that fixed, we got our total acreage on here, so this is ordinance twenty twenty-three dash seven. So it's just an ordinance, the Board of Commissioners, uh, which rezones the property to northeast corner of seven hundred north and seven hundred west in, uh, City Decatur, Adams County, Indiana. Just precise, the plant commission, uh, of Adams County, uh, convened on Thursday, March sixteenth, twenty twenty-three, to consider an application for rezoning of certain real estate. Uh, located in Adams County, the applicant for the rezoning, uh, application is the owner of a parcel of real estate located at eighteen fifty west, US Highway two twenty-four. Um, which is a portion of, uh, parcel numbers listed, so we got those listed, uh, which is, uh, six acres and then another one point four one acres. The real estate is currently zoned, A agricultural, agricultural, and the applicant desires to rezone, uh, the real estate as I one light industrial. And the plant commission made inquiry into the impact proposed zoning, zoning changes, uh, would have on adjacent landowners, I mean, findings of fact. Um, and, uh, plant commission, uh, approved the, uh, recommended a due pass for the rezoning. Um, and it will rezone, uh, made a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners for the County of Adams, State of Indiana, that the real estate, which is described on exhibit A, which is a total of seven point one four acres, be rezoned from. A to I one light industrial, therefore be ordained by Adams County Board of Commissioners, real estate described exhibit A, hereby rezone, uh, from A to I one, the plant commission, she'll update the Adams County zoning maps accordingly. And the auditor shall forward a copy of the doctor ordinance, uh, to local state officials as required by law, adopted today, any questions on this, uh, ordinance, gentlemen? All right, just need a motion to adopt ordinance twenty, or twenty twenty-three, uh, dash seven, exonerating. Got it?
Yeah.
All right.
I got two copies. Steve, did you second that?
I did, I didn't, but I did.
All right.
Okay, I'll keep one, you have one if you want.
Yep.
All right. Rezone. Later. There we go. There's your copy.
All right, now they can start dropping posts in the holes, huh? Nope. Oh no. What else?
They saw the development plan to go.
They have a what?
They have to have a development plan in front of the plant commissioner.
Oh, okay.
Hold it in.
Do we have any more hoops that we have to hold up for on the jumps?
They didn't very understanding.
Hey, while we're at it, um, don't wanna hold you guys up, highway guys, but you want this, uh, signed agreement here, we'll get this approved.
Whenever.
Equipment rental agreement for the nurse tank, what's a nurse tank?
So what it is, is every year when we start chipping seal, the whoever, whatever company gets the low bid, provides a semi trailer, it's a heated semi trailer, they provided us at their cost. That way, if we have oil left over at the end of the day, if rain comes and we've got an order, it can go in there. And it can stay warm, that way the next day we can draw right out of it, we don't have to try and get rid of it, we don't have to keep on our truck. If we get a total rain out day, we'll hold a full semi load of oil. And so basically, all this is, is an agreement that, yeah, they're gonna provide the tank for us and all that.
All right, and this, this stays on site at the highway department, or do we?
They do, it stays there all chipping seal season till we're done.
Okay. Yeah, so this is no charge, no delivery charge, it's just, okay, they've got some language in here where there's, I just crossed that out.
That's fine, yeah, Pete, the salesman gave it to me and said, I've had to do this, here they want me to do it, so here you go, and I, I didn't understand it, I thought I'd get to somebody.
Yeah, I crossed out stuff that doesn't apply, the rest of it's fine, so just need a motion to approve this, uh, equipment rental agreement, which really is, there is no rental payment, but it's an agreement that basically says. Uh, we'll take care of it, we're not gonna damage it, um.
We're not gonna eat you for anything, you know, we're not gonna do the.
Probably need to notify, I would give Carla a call at, um, insurance, SAR.
Oh, okay.
And just let her know that we've got this thing under our agreement, you know, we're responsible for it, so we need to have it covered.
Okay.
Um, you know, somebody would.
Back into under a.
Somebody would decide they wanna heist a nurse tank, which I don't expect, but anyway, that's in here, so we might as well call them and at least get it scheduled.
So move.
Second.
All right, motion carries, go ahead with the nurse tank.
I'll sign all of it, all right.
I think just me. Did Brad need this?
Yeah, I need to send that back to the company.
Yeah, I need their signature.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, that's actually heated, huh?
Yeah, we provide a propane, a big, like household propane tank and hook it right up to that.
Hmm.
We can fire it up and keep the oil warm.
Cool. Hey, do you have anything else right now, Mark?
Um, I've got a, yeah, do you have other stuff to go through yet on the agenda?
Uh, yeah, Shannon, so.
Oh.
You want to have Shannon come up first?
Um, I've got a resolution here. This is, has to do with the sale of the county farm ground. So we need to approve, the commissioners by resolution need to approve that sale by public auction on April thirteenth. Uh, so this resolution then would be resolution nine, two thousand twenty-three. Nine, uh, it's resolution, Board of Commissioners. Whereas Adams County, and here's some history for you, established an infirmary, an institution which was owned and operated by the government of Adams County. Making said property the possession of the political subdivision of Adams County. And whereas Adams County infirmary, infirmary was gifted a certain parcel of real estate located on two hundred east in Adams County. And on November seventh of eighteen seventy-four, by means of a transfer deed. And whereas portion of the property was transferred, Adams County Solid Waste Management District on, in December of nineteen ninety-six. Uh, so that was the, uh, it was divided, parcel was divided at that time. Uh, and also the Adams County Council and Adams County Board of Commissioners desire to sell a majority of the remaining parcels. Which are comprised of approximately one hundred and thirty-two acres on County Road two hundred east. Uh, the legal description is attached. Um, and the Adams County Board of Commissioners desire to sell said real estate. And that all sales of county-owned real estate with values exceeding fifty thousand must be approved by both the fiscal and executive bodies. Whereas a public hearing was held by both Adams County Council and Adams County Board of Commissioners on December thirteenth, twenty twenty-two. And have been duly and properly advised as required by statute, uh, discuss the proposed property in sale. And the council also approved, passed a resolution approving the sale. Now therefore being resolved by the Board of Commissioners, uh, you also approve the sale of the parcels to be conducted by public auction. On the thirteenth day of April, twenty twenty-three with reserve and subject to the approval of the Adams County Board of Commissioners. So you would have to approve, have to approve the sale. Or not approve the sale, depending upon the price at auction relative to, you know, the appraisals. So anyway, that's dated today. Uh, need you to adopt this. And then we also will, uh, publish, we'll publish a notice and we're about two weeks away.
And so moved.
Second.
All right, motion carries.
All right. Better double check and just make sure we got the date right. I think it's the thirteenth, because it's on a Friday, Friday the thirteenth.
If we have low bids the evening of the sale, does that still give us the, the right to?
No, it's a Thursday.
Yeah. Yeah.
For some reason, I thought it was on Friday, but.
Thirteenth.
It is the thirteenth, right? All right. I was wrong. At least it's not Friday the thirteenth. All right.
So if we have low bids the night of the auction, do we have the right to?
Um, yeah, the, I think so. We, but we probably have to schedule another public hearing to confirm a sale.
But I mean, we would have the right, if we're not getting bids to?
Well, if you, you can always say, it can always be a no sale.
That's what I mean.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. All right. I'm going to make this a lot here for you. I'll make a copy. I've actually got a.
You want to have one and I'll have one.
Yeah. There's a type of a page or a one place.
All right, very good. Well, hopefully we'll turn those purses into something very productive.
Let me see that first picture because I had to. Um, Clayton, did you have a resolution also?
Just those two that we already did.
Oh, okay. Okay. I think that's all I got.
All right. Shannon?
So I only have a couple of things today. Uh, last week I sent you guys a job description for the administrative assistant position at Community Corrections. So that position was, um, vacated by a current employee who's moving over to EMA. So where that person is going from one department to another, um, and then I did my normal process. I asked Ian to review the job description, make sure everything was up to date. And, um, he did, and then he made a couple of small changes. So I just need approval on that, please, and then permission to post and recruit for that position, Community Corrections.
Okay, so moved.
Second.
All right, motion carries.
And then the other one that I sent you guys was for the ditch technician position in the surveyors department. And that kind of piggyback off of what you guys talked about in drainage board last week. Um, Mike, Kevin and I met and talked about that position and like, just tried to put some, get together some plans and what we could do. And, and how we could best manage that department, given the current, um, hiring climate. So one of the recommendations that they made was that we work on a, um, CDL training program. And in the meantime, we revised the job description to say that a CDO is required within one year of employment versus prior to start of employment. So that would give us the ability to hire someone with or without a CDO, assuming that they're going to get the CDO within one year.
No, and think of a couple of little things.
Yeah, small stuff.
Uh, there's one thing like in that first per paragraph, you eliminated that they would have any super supervisory, uh, authority. So I, I assume that was intentional.
Yes. Um, so we just added as needed at the end of that first sentence. Because the ditch technicians are not responsible for interviewing, hiring, training, planning, assigning, and, and all that kind of other fun stuff. Um, we just, as needed, and they, if we have a ditch technician assistant, they do what they have to do. But it doesn't specify what they're actually supposed to do. So it makes it a little more vague on purpose.
And so they won't have to be certified in spraying?
So we actually talked to that as well, and it's not a certification per se. It's just an annual training. So I don't know what the miscommunication was between the surveyors department at the time and New Focus who wrote the job descriptions. But it's not a certification. It's just something that they do every year that they get trained on.
And then as far as the septic systems, they, they don't have to deal with septic systems, I don't think.
No, they don't work at all with that. I mean, if, if there's a drain flooded, stoppage, they'll work on, but not. The septic system, the regional sewer should not discharge any water, anything.
Right.
But when we talked about it again, that's a training that they go through. That's not a certification per se.
Yeah. So the pipeline safety is definitely is needed, but it's not just pipeline. It's over ground, overhead, underground.
Oh, right.
Everything. So.
Yeah.
And we do that yearly.
So if they have it, great. If they don't, then they will go to the annual training the following year is basically how this is.
We had them with on coke, twenty-four, seven, three sixty-five.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that does not happen according to Mike.
We don't know where that come from.
Yeah.
There was a time when the ditch technicians were going to plow snow also years ago. So whether that fell in that one at that time, that's our best guess, that they were talking about with that one. That hasn't happened for years, right?
We don't get snow anymore.
Oh, yeah, we don't get snow. It's set to trouble artists.
Are we paying for their CDO?
So we haven't put a training program in place yet. That's something that we have basically a couple of months to get, for you guys to decide, for council to decide, to get up and running. Um, if that's something we're interested in, but we don't have anything in place as of today.
So, so if we hire somebody, they have to have a CDO every one year, are they?
At this time, they're going to be responsible for it at this time. But we, if something comes up and we do put something together, then obviously they would fall most likely within that program. And it would also benefit highway. Um, they would fall within that program, but we would have to spell out provisions of, this is how much you have to pay back. This is what it costs. This is what happens if you fail it. We would put all that into a plan.
Well, the only thing I'm asking is, so if we would hire somebody next week and then put this plan together in sixty days, will they grandfather in since?
Yeah, I would think so, as long as you guys are okay with it, since it's a new program altogether.
Solid Waste is also going to face that CDO issue.
Well, and I think Solid Waste has already done that.
Yeah.
Yeah. They, yes, they did. Yeah. So.
I think, I think it makes sense in this climate, in order to be able to recruit people, and especially you may have people here local that would be good and.
Yeah, and it is an upfront cost. I mean, I looked into just very briefly the other day, a couple of programs in Fort Wayne. And I mean, we're talking six, seven thousand dollars that you have to pay upfront to even go to the training. Maybe people don't have that, and this would give them an opportunity to get trained, and then it would benefit us in the backend, or at least for a couple of years.
Would there be a salary disparity between somebody that's CDO already or somebody that we have to pay for?
We kind of talked about that a little bit, but we want to have more discussion with you guys and with council, if that's something that you wanted to discuss.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
It, it would also be nice to have the, you know, we have an assistant and a supervisor ditch tech. It'd also be good to have a, just a difference in their pay sometime.
Yeah.
Yeah. Right now they're the same.
We brainstormed quite a bit that day, so.
Okay.
So you need a motion on?
The job description.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Okay.
Thanks very much.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So if you want a job, the position is open.
I don't know if I could get a CDO or not.
No, we'll just give you a show.
Uh, would you show me which end you hang on to?
I'm good at holding the one end like this.
All right. Thank you. All right. So if we, uh, go ahead and we've got an, uh, executive scheduled, executive session scheduled following the regular meeting. So at this time, is there anything else from the general public for the Board of Commissioners? Okay, sure.
Just want to give you information real quick. Uh, much of slater, uh, there is a bill that the Indiana Sheriff's Association is trying to get amended. Um, it's restricting the authority of the sheriff to negotiate and or write contracts in with the sheriff's office. And there's been a lot of things going around, and I'm just putting some information out there. We believe that there are plenty of checks and balances already set up for the system. Uh, through budgetary, uh, commissary has brought up, commissary, we give you a report twice a year of what our expenditures are in commissary. And we also audit by the State Board of Accounts with commissary. So we believe the checks and balances there by statute, commissary can only be used for nine different categories. And when we make an expenditure, the list I give you tells you what category that falls under. So it's, we believe the checks and balances are for commissary, uh, are there. As far as writing contracts, what really bothers us in this Senate bill three seventeen is it's taken away the right to negotiate and sign a contract. Which means you guys would have to negotiate my garbage contract, picking up my trash. You guys would have to, uh, negotiate every contract I have. And honestly, and nothing against you gentlemen, but you don't have a clue what's going on over in that jail as far as some of those items. Uh, the overall jail you do, the budget stuff, but the day-to-day operations, I don't think you guys would understand what is needed to negotiate those contracts. The security, the locks, the preventative maintenance on HVAC, on my drains, on my roof, on my security systems. I mean, there's a lot that goes on on the day-to-day, and that's why the Sheriff's Association is fighting this so much. Um, so I just want to give you this. This is a thing about what's going around about the Lake County Sheriff buying a seven hundred and seventy thousand dollar boat for Lake Michigan. Well, they were saying he didn't get, uh, he didn't get permission basically. Well, you can see from these articles. He asked Lake County Council, said, well, no, we need more information. He came back with more information. They approved it. Well, then he negotiated seventy-five percent federal grant, paid for seventy-five percent of the boat. So really, the taxpayers only had to pay just over, just under two hundred thousand dollars for the boat. So we are doing things right now. Are all sheriffs perfect? No, I'm not saying that. Uh, but I don't think everybody in your seat is also perfect either. So, um, we don't think the system's broke. And I just wanted to let you know it's in the forefront. We've been battling this for a week now, and we are battling it still strong. Uh, we are, uh, taking on, uh, IAC. They're the ones pushing this, and we're the ones pushing hard against it. Uh, but also if this bill passed too, you guys would also have to negotiate and contract for what voting machines the county's going to use. You'd have to negotiate all contracts for all departments except for the courts and the prosecutor, I think, are, are the only ones not involved. So, um, and I don't know if you guys were aware of this bill and what this amendment said. I know I've talked to you, Steve, a little bit about it, or Stan a little bit about it, but, uh, it just involves a lot.
Everything I've seen from the IACC, they are definitely pushing the amendments that are in this bill. And I had a discussion with Matt Lehman the other day, and we talked about it quite a bit. And, and he is also, you know, whereas he does not want commissioners, you know, to, as us being the bottom line on being responsible for our contracts. He definitely does not see this as a practical way to address it by you not being allowed to negotiate and sign contracts. So he's still looking at the amendments. He's still talking to, uh, AIC. He's still talking to the IACC. So it's, it's not a done deal yet. So he's trying to look at.
Correct.
Because he sees, the other thing he sees is the problems that brought these amendments about are not problems that we're having in Adams County.
Correct. And those problems are still being litigated in court. They're not done. And that's one thing he's also, they don't like to legislate litigation. Let the litigation get done. It will tell us a little bit more of what we need to do or how we need to do it. Because if we made this and litigation says, no, something has to change, then we just did all this for nothing, and we have to change it. So, and, uh, I, ISA and, uh, I, I get the initials. I see, Indiana, such a.
County Commissioners.
Yeah, well, the county is.
Or Association of Indiana County.
AIC. We were negotiating with this back in the, on the first half of the legislature when it was in the senate. And we thought we agreed to not do anything, talk this summer and negotiate and figure out something that both sides happy with. Well, then this amendment got split last Tuesday. And so that's what we're fighting, just to squash this. I know, uh, Representative Lehman's talking about summer study possibly, something like that too. But, um, just trying to slow it down to where we can work out, because like I said, he's not happy with the negotiation being in the language. Um, but one thing that's a little bit different with the sheriff's office than other departments is we have, I have my own legal deputy too that reviews contracts. So it's not just me, Dan May, we're looking at a contract saying, oh yeah, this is good. I have an attorney also looking at it too. Uh, and a lot of mine, um, the, the, uh. Names are going bad on me right now.
Mark.
Mark, geez. Mark, he also reviews a lot of my contracts also. I don't necessarily bring them to you guys, but I do let people review them. I'm not making these decisions on my own.
Sure.
Uh, so I just wanted to get that out there, because like I said, I know I've had conversations with you. Um, I've been involved with meetings down at the State House. I'm going to the State House tomorrow. Um, but I just want to let you know where I stand on this, and so you don't hear things from somebody else.
Well, and, and that's kind of where the rub comes, because like I say, when we're the bottom line for all contracts signed in the county. It, it's not like we are interested or, or always capable of negotiating contracts for your specific department. But, I mean, since I've been commissioner for a little over two years, I don't know how many times I've been sued for things that, you know, I didn't negotiate.
Yeah.
And, and so that, that's why I say the bottom line comes down to us. So, you know, it's always been a cooperative effort, as long as you've been sheriffing, as long as it.
And, and that's what's unsettling is hearing how some of the relationships in some counties are between all department heads of the sheriff and the commissioners or the council. I'm very blessed with what we have here. Uh, it's, you guys call me, I call you, and we talk and we get things done. In other, other counties, it's not that way at all. And it's, it's a nightmare. It, it really is. And I'd say for both sides, I mean, where they cannot civilly talk about, get something worked out. Uh, they are literally just, you sue me to get something done, and I'll sue you to get something done. It's like holy smoke. So, no, we are blessed here. We don't have issues here. Um, but, uh, I'm also on the legislative committee for the ISA, so that's why I've been involved with the talks and negotiations down at the State House. And, uh, like I said, I just want to be upfront with you guys.
Even with one of the most recent significant contracts that you've negotiated was. Even with one of the most recent significant contracts that you've negotiated was with Spielman. You know, look at the size of that contract, look at the negotiation that you did to kind of bring us in into a better.
Yeah, and Mark was aware of those contracts, it's like, I'm not gonna do that stuff without making notifications.
Well, you still have to follow public purchasing.
Correct.
I mean, and so are they amending the public purchasing statute, title five, is that what they're amending?
No, this is strictly a a one amendment that states that commissary and something has to be, purchases have to be approved by uh your legislative branch.
It's just certain funds that there's.
Commissary, and then it has a statement that all contracts has to be negotiated and signed by the legislative branch.
Do you have a copy of the bill?
Uh, I can get you a copy of.
Yeah, email me a copy of the.
So, I mean, and that's what it's, it's very broad, and it was just an amendment stuck in the 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 main bill, three seventeen is a good bill, it's allowing municipalities and agencies to. Put like money down on projects toward where you can lock in prices instead of having to pay at the end, and then people aren't getting as good as pricing, that's the initial bill itself, it's a very small bill, it's just the amendment that got kicked in is what's causing some issues.
As it's looking.
Yes, and.
I was trying to find it, you probably got the whole thing before I can find.
Yeah, and then like I said, there's two cases in Lake County that's being uh legislated, uh, the sheriffs have one on the initial. We wanted appellate level, and that case in Lake County is going, uh, waiting to see if the Supreme Court's gonna hear it, uh, they haven't haven't decided to take the case yet or not, and then. Um, Clinton County, there's uh one, couple of cases that the sheriff of it won, uh, but Clinton County has a separate issue on some criminal stuff. With the sheriff and uh some contracts that he did, so it's just tied up on the civil side, and there's a couple of cases in the uh criminal side. But there's some counties like uh, can't think off the top of my head, but they're trying to tell the sheriff what cars to buy, uh, possibly what guns to buy, uh, and things like that, so. Like I said, it's it's a two-way street on some of the sites, some sheriffs are probably doing things a little aggressively, and some commissioners, you know, I'm just glad we don't have that here. Um, and when I started hearing about all these things, is it really that bad? Yeah, in some places it is, the majority, I'm thinking less than seven counties, six counties where they might be having some issues, all the other counties seem to be working fine. So I just wanna do that information to you, Mark, I'll get you those uh.
Yes, and then a copy of Clayton to you.
Oh, yeah.
Well, and that's, that was one thing I asked, uh, now, when I talked to him the other day, is just kind of, keep keep me in the loop, to make make sure that we know, you know, where they're at with those amendments.
Not a problem, won't change the way we do business here, that's for sure, thanks.
Okay, anybody else with uh, anything else from the general public? Okay? If not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, the meeting is adjourned.